Well, and here we are again. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order the Planning Commission meeting Tuesday, February 18th, 2020. Will you all please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Painter, please call the roll.
Chair Keeney.
Here.
Chair Keeney. Vice Chair List.
Here.
Member Rains.
Here.
Member Lepa.
Here.
Member Friend.
Yes.
I was having a hard time hearing you. Maybe you could speak a little more directly in the microphone. I'm getting over a cold. My ears are a little stopped up, so worse than usual. Our next order of business is to move to the consent calendar where we consider approving the agenda and the meeting minutes from our February 4th, 2020 meeting. Under this item, I've received a request from staff to make a minor amendment to our agenda on page two. We need to switch the numbering for 7.1 and 7.2, just switch those, so that they're in agreement with the numbering on the staff report and also the order in which we will hear these items. So tonight, we need to amend it so that we hear the temporary use permit for the sidewalk dining. Make that 7.1 and make the site plan review for the historic district 7, make that 7.2. Are there any other changes or changes to the meeting minutes from the commission? Any changes from the public? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent calendar as amended.
Still moved?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Moving to item six, items of interest to the public. This is the portion of our meeting reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. State law prohibits commission from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action by the Planning Commission under specified circumstances. We reserve the right to limit the speaker's time to three minutes, and we ask everyone to remain civil and personal attacks are not allowed. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the Planning Commission on something that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to seven, public hearings. Keeping in order of our agendas, we'll hear 7.1, which is a special temporary use permit, TUP 20-01 sidewalk dining area permit. I'll turn it over to Mr. Painter for the staff report.
Thank you. This is a request for consideration by the application filed by Ben Butler, the business owner of Bene Restaurante Italiano, for a sidewalk dining area permit within the city's Main Street right-of-way adjacent to his business at 423 Main Street. The commissioners should be, and the public should be, very familiar with the sidewalk dining furniture that Mr. Butler's had in the location out in front of his restaurant since 2017. It includes four metal tables, and each of the tables has two chairs. There's decorative wrought iron fencing that separates the dining area space from the public walkway along Main Street frontage of this eating and drinking establishment business. The Planning Commission approved a temporary use permit back in 2017 for basically the same request that's before you this evening, with the exception of Mr. Butler would like to have three umbrella furniture added to the overall streetscape of his outdoor dining area. That temporary use permit back in 2017 expired 12 months after Planning Commission approval, which would have been December 18th, 2018. No extension request was filed by Mr. Butler, and therefore, that's why the new request comes before you this evening. The applicant's submittal documents were provided as attachment A, which show the location to scale of the proposed chairs, tables, the umbrellas, the wrought iron fencing. It further shows the furniture location and its relationship to existing streetscape, the street tree along Main Street, the street light, as well as its proximity to the curb, along with showing the vertical clearance of the umbrellas within and along the sidewalk. All tables and chairs would be removed from the outdoor dining area and stored within the restaurant after the restaurant's evening 10:00 PM closure. Existing storefront soffit lighting illuminates the dining area for evening use, and the area would be used for the consumption of Italian food, beer, and wine that's served at the restaurant. The request as designed and analyzed by staff is consistent with general plan policies that promote development within, as well as improving the economic vitality of downtown. It meets the intent of the sidewalk dining regulations and the development standards under the zoning ordinance. Staff has conditioned the request to have approved to comply with the operational standards under the zoning ordinance, as well as obtaining an encroachment permit from the engineering department prior to utilizing the sidewalk dining area. The placement of chairs, tables, the barrier, et cetera, umbrellas, these are all considered minor accessory structures for an existing commercial business, and the proposed use, therefore, is categorically exempt from environmental review per section 15311 of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. Public notice for this request was published in the Mountain Democrat on February 3rd, as well as mailers sent out to property owners within a 500-foot radius. No public comments have been received as the date of the report and its preparation and distribution to the Planning Commission. Staff recommends conditional approval and suggests the commission by motion take the action on page four of the staff report. That includes requested conditions of approval provided as attachment B. Mr. Butler is in the audience this evening, and that concludes my staff report.
Thank you very much. I have a couple of questions for you, just to make sure I'm clear on what's being proposed. As you stated, I think all of us are familiar with the site. It's right in downtown, a prominent spot, but are all the elements described in the project description existing, including the umbrellas? You know, I think I'm familiar with the fencing and the tables, and the umbrellas have already been used?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and has the city received any complaints regarding this installation since the temporary use permit was issued in 2017?
Staff is not aware of any complaints filed.
Thank you. Do any other commissioners have questions about the staff report?
My question was just related to the umbrellas and whether they were new or used with regards to security, you know, having them latched on correctly and everything, but if they're already been used and we know they're good, then that was my only question.
Okay.
I'll yield to Mr. List.
Yeah, one question. On page two of the report, the second paragraph, it says barriers will be a minimum of seven foot from the street curb. If I remember correctly, and I walk this almost every Sunday night, there is also either a trash can or a light standard or something within range of this. Now, is it from the barrier from that point to that light standard, or are we strictly talking about to the curb?
I believe it's to the other street furniture, such as the street tree and the street light.
Okay, because this says to the curb, and that, it narrows down quite a bit there. That's my only, that and one other thing. The drawing that was provided for us is too light. I couldn't see a measurement.
Did you not get a full size?
Duh. Yeah, it's showing here that it's five foot, one inch from that corner post to the tree standard.
That is what it says, yes.
I'm sorry?
That is what it depicts.
And our minimum at that point is five foot?
Yes, and it's seven feet from an obstruction such as the railing to the curb. That dimension is not stated, but 40 inches minus 10 feet is approximately seven, six and a half feet.
No. It's more like five foot at that point, five foot one, to where that planter box is. My point is that if...
Is your concern to the street fixtures or to the curb?
To the street fixture, which in this case would be, according to the drawing, it is a tree planter.
Yes.
Okay. So my question is, are we talking about a clear distance of five feet between the corner post and that tree? Is that... The only thing it says in here is the distance from the fence to the curb of seven foot. So if that's to give the right-of-way, okay, and then if we have that planter sitting there, at that point, from that post to the planter box is five foot, is that still within regulation?
I can speak to that. I think the seven foot is an attempt to, and I'll let Mr. Painter correct me if I misspeak, but basically, my read is the seven foot is memorializing the existing distance, but the minimum standard, city standard, for maintaining an unobstructed path from the fencing to any obstacle would be five feet. Can't go below five feet.
Okay, that was my point. I want to make sure that a new standard of seven foot wasn't being applied, and we're at five foot.
Right. I believe the seven foot is just memorializing what is proposed by the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So Andrew, just wanted to be clear. I do recall this item coming before us, and we approved it. The way your staff report is written, did we approve TUP 1704, but we accepted the umbrellas? We did not allow the umbrellas, or the umbrellas just weren't part of that? It wasn't clear from the staff report.
The original application in 2017 did not include umbrellas.
Okay.
They have been placed there between approval by the commission and today.
Okay, so then now we're including the umbrellas in the formal application?
Formally, yes.
So the full package. But the encroachment permit was never satisfied, that requirement was never satisfied?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, the encroachment permit was not obtained for the 2017 temporary use permit approval.
So, right, and that's listed in attachment B that, okay, I understand now what we're, what all we need to do for consideration. At this time, I'd like to ask the project applicant, Mr. Butler, to step up and give us a summary, if you have anything else to add to the package. Good evening.
Good evening. Actually, Andrew, his information on what I'm doing is, I couldn't say it better. I mean, it's very detailed and elaborate. The only other thing I can add is, yeah, it does meet all the city codes. It is a great benefit to my customers, the locals, tourists. There's not a, hardly a day that goes by about, you know, compliments that there's actually a patio on Main Street, and so it's, I do feel it's a benefit to Placerville, and I think it just enhances it somewhat to the effect of, just like the street light, I'm sorry, the lights that are overhanging in Main Street is a nice feature, whole nother subject, but anyway, it does seem to benefit, and I haven't had any complaints yet, so far so good. But, yeah, that's about it, yeah.
I have a couple of questions for you about your application. I'm sure you're familiar with the conditions in attachment B that's in our staff report. This refers to the conditions of approval for your special temporary use permit. In particular, section three, section, chapter three, section one, development standards, and this is on page, it's on the second page of that attachment. Item J, "Any sidewalk dining area shall be temporary in nature and design so that the entire dining area can be easily removed." Can that all be disassembled should the need arise?
Absolutely, 100%.
And put out of the way if you have to do some construction or some other improvement?
Absolutely. I mean, every night I pull the tables and chairs in, one, because that's what the code says, and number two, if it didn't, I would do it anyway, because I'd be a little leery of vandalism, theft, and/or maybe a homeless person finding a new home in front of the restaurant, so, yeah. At any rate, they come in and out every day.
Okay, and the actual wrought iron fence could be, if the need arose?
Absolutely.
Could be deconstructed?
Within seconds, yeah.
There's another item, it's one of the conditions, and that's H, and that's "The use of sound amplification on the exterior of a sidewalk dining area is prohibited." I know you have music inside the dining area. Do you ever have, do you have a speaker outside for your customers?
Yes, I do.
You do? Okay, I want to explore this a little further, discussion in the council. I just wanted to make sure that I remembered the situation right. You're not the only dining establishment up and down Main Street that does have a speaker, and I actually enjoy the jazz standards that you play, so...
Oh, thank you.
Those are all my questions right now. Do any of the other commissioners have questions at this time? Mr. List?
Just one. Being over six foot and walking west on a Sunday night, lots of times they'll pull the shades or the umbrellas out past the edge of your wrought iron fence, which catches me about right here. If you could have your staff just make sure that that's back far enough that it doesn't encroach to the public's walkway.
Sure, absolutely.
I have a couple of questions. The umbrellas are going to be attached to the wrought iron railing, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so those will not come in in the evening? Those will stay?
I prefer, although I've made it detachable, easily detachable, but they are secured with a heavy-duty clamp.
Okay, and you're comfortable that they are wind-secure?
Oh, absolutely.
That the wind can't pick them up and take them away?
No, it kind of proved itself that one, we had a real good windstorm, what was that, in October when the?
Yeah.
I think it was October, yeah, they held up with flying colors, so they are very, very high quality. It's probably the highest-quality umbrellas built in the country.
Okay, and then with regards to the decoration in the drawing, I think it talked about vines, leaves, and grape clusters. Those are metal, those are part of the wrought iron?
What was it?
The grapevines?
Oh, yes, yeah.
So that's metal, that's not vegetation, actual vegetation?
Correct.
Okay, then, as was pointed out in the staff report, and it's also in condition or attachment B that I'm looking for, attachment A is at the very end. That's what was a little bit confusing. And frankly, nothing sours the wine more than to have a requirement that's not met, and so my question directly is, why wasn't the encroachment permit obtained the last time?
Because I unintentionally overlooked it, thinking that the permit fee, or the application fee, I guess it is, was a certain X amount of dollars, and I thought that was part of the permit.
Okay, fair enough.
So I didn't, I just unintentionally overlooked it, or I just assumed that was all one fee.
Okay, and we apparently don't have a mechanism to friendly remind the business on, hey, you need to do this, or somehow there's a disconnect there. I see Pierre going for the microphone.
Madam Chair, if I may, just for information, there's a couple of reasons why the city really would like to have an encroachment permit. One, because it's a more permanent encroachment into the public right-of-way, and that's the fencing, it's there 24/7. The second reason is it's the encroachment permit that provides the mechanism whereby the owner of the encroachment would then hold harmless the city should there be any kind of an issue?
Sure.
An injury or something like that. Liability then rests with Mr. Butler, not the city of Placerville.
Yeah, makes perfect sense, and I'm not challenging by any stretch the city's desire or need for the encroachment permit, it's just that, and I was supportive of the outdoor dining then, and I'm supportive of it now, but then when you see that, yeah, with the encroachment permit, which was a condition, was not obtained, then it's like, okay, well, what's the deal with that? Your explanation is reasonable, and so just back to the city, somehow we could figure out a way to let people, hey, you also have this, you forgot, or when it's finalized, as part of finaling or something, I don't know how that would work, I don't know what the answer is. I can understand bureaucratic processes and fees can cause glazing over of eyes, so we'll accept that explanation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Butler.
Thank you very much.
Does anyone from the public wish to speak or have a comment about the proposal before us tonight? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment part of our public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion. I think it's pretty straightforward, you know, what's before us, it's actually in existence, and it is, I think, a benefit to our community. I've enjoyed that space. I think it's a good addition to Bene Restaurant. My question about the sound amplification, I think, actually may bring up further research or concern with the city. The reason I asked Mr. Butler just to confirm my memory that there was music, if we're going to impose this, to make it a condition for him, then we, you know, need to enforce that up and down Main Street, you know, for everyone. Or alternatively, we could revisit it and possibly allow certain hours, allow some businesses to have outdoor amplification. So, Mr. Rivas, do you have a, can you answer my, I think you understand that, I just want to make it a level playing field for all the businesses.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I may, the sidewalk dining ordinance went through a lot of discussion with both the Planning Commission and at the city council level before the ordinance was then finally adopted, and so this is a standard for having sidewalk dining, and so it was thought of that we can't have everybody that has tables and chairs out on sidewalk then having music playing into the public space. I think with respect to what Mr. Butler is doing, is the music is very, very low. Should we receive any complaint or feel that it's too loud? If I could hear it across the street, we would tell him he has to turn it off or remove the speakers, because he would be, not only in violation of the condition of approval for this temporary use permit, but he would be in violation of the sidewalk dining ordinance.
And I think when I read that, when I was reading through them, I sort of pictured that as being like a massive speaker on a pole outside of the dining area, not that he was prohibited from having some sound within the dining area. Does that make sense? Like, the way it was written to me is on the exterior of a sidewalk dining area, meaning when you're sitting in there, you can hear the music, that's fine, but you can't throw up a huge speaker and blast your music down the street, but having music within it is okay. That's how I would have interpreted that, or did, I suppose.
Mr. Rivas, do you have any clarification?
We had that conversation, if I remember correctly. I recall specifically having this conversation, I think the last time this came to us about sound amplification.
2017.
And, yes, and it seemed to me, I remember specifically, sound coming from within the restaurant, or kind of being part of what's existing now versus the additional, and I think, I don't remember what we decided, but whatever we decided is working, because it's reasonable now, and between the public house and the karaoke coming out of Powell's, I don't worry too much about Bene, truthfully, but it raises, it also seems to me, did not the old El Centro, did they not also have an application for outdoor dining? I think they did, and sound amplification came up at that time as well, and that's all in that smallish bell tower area, and so, I mean, it's almost going to be self-policed to the extent that you can't have, you know, the jazz over here and the punk over here, whatever, I mean, they're going to have to keep the sounds reasonable and low, so otherwise they're going to conflict, I would think, just my thought. And then it still doesn't explain what's coming out of the existing restaurants, and I'm not suggesting we do anything with that, don't misunderstand, so I think it's self-policing. I did have a couple of questions of staff, though.
Just to kind of tie that up, I think we'll, you know, obviously need to leave it the way it is, but if this does become an issue in the future, maybe, you know, we'd have to do a decimal level test and make a determination. Like I said, I just want to make it a level playing field for all the restaurateurs up and down Main Street, and so you have some other?
I should have brought these up, one question to staff.
Oh.
I did not find an expiration for this anywhere in the staff report.
The code provides 12 months.
Okay, I didn't bother to look up the code, I should have done that. Okay, so this is a one-year, so every year the applicant's got to come back before us, or can they just automatically renew it ministerially through you?
There is a provision under this particular ordinance that allows, prior to the expiration date, an applicant who has been granted a TUP can apply for an extension, and the director would be involved with that decision.
So long as there's no changes. If there's changes, then it's got to come back.
That's correct.
Okay.
In this case, we had an expired permit, and a request for an extension was not filed, and that's why it's before you today.
Fair enough.
One question on that. If they come back, can they come back multiple times, or just the one for an extension of one year?
They would just come back for an extension for one year, and they would have to keep doing that every year.
Okay.
It allows the city the ability to reevaluate the use.
Also, I think this goes without, really without saying, but if there were substantive changes to the ordinance during the time of an approval, then of course, that may trigger a review by you for a new application pending a new standard, a new regulation that may come forward, but at this point, that's not foreseeable unless it's related to noise, perhaps, as the chair mentioned.
So, just to finish up, and as I mentioned, the El Centro also had a request, I believe we approved it, for something similar.
Yeah.
And I presume that other businesses then would be able to do the same thing, as long as they have enough sidewalk space. Is that, essentially, that's the predominant limitation, if I understand correctly, in terms of our decision whether or not to grant, all things being equal, is do you have enough sidewalk space in front of your establishment, that particular area? that particular area, for a few businesses such as Benet's and?
And it must meet the threshold clearances and separations from?
Okay, beyond that, then, then we don't really, we're, we're not opposed to more and more businesses having that, it's just that only some have the real estate in front that are conducive and can allow that.
At present, the code does not stipulate a maximum quantity of these types of, of permits issued.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, that's all my questions.
Barbara, you have a question?
I'm just pointing out that the last, the last three pages of this report, Attachment B, if you go down to Item 2, that's where it says the permit will be one-year only and renewable. So I'm just pointing out that it was included in the staff report.
Any other discussion among the commissioners? Well, I would entertain a, a motion.
It's been a minute since I initiated one, so let me remind myself. Let's see, so motion to adopt the staff record, the staff report is part of the public record, and make the findings as listed in the staff record for special temporary use permit 20-01, a sidewalk dining area permit request at 423 Main Street. Third, approve the request, subject to the approval, the conditions of approval in Attachment B as listed in the staff report.
Excellent, we have a motion?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion or changes to the motion? None. Mr. Painter, would you call the roll?
Okay, from left to right, Member Reins. Vice Chair List.
Yes.
Chair Keeney.
Yes.
Member Lepper.
Yes.
Member Friend.
Yes.
Okay, approved. Thank you very much, Mr. Butler. Look forward to seeing you again on Main Street.
Outside.
We'll move on to Item 7.2. This is 3148 Sacramento Street, Site Plan Review, 20-01, Historic District Review. Mr. Painter, would you please give your staff report at this time?
This is a request for consideration by an application filed by Lori Volker. She is the property owner at 3148 Sacramento Street. The location, site location is within the Sacramento Street and Chamberlain Street Residential Historic District. And the request tonight involves the replacing of two windows, as well as siding, and the addition of faux rock veneer on the residence located at 3148 Sacramento Street. Improvements on the site include approximately 1,000 square foot residence with garage below the home. Per El Dorado County, the assessor records indicate the, the residence was constructed in the mid 1930s. The home has a simple north and south elevation roof cables. Wood frame picture windows with divided lights that are likely original are visible along the south and east elevations, visible from the public way. A pair of vinyl slider windows frame the southeast corner of the home. Additional vinyl slider windows are located along the east and west elevations. Horizontal lap siding, likely original, wraps the building's exterior. Texture 111 panels, which is also a siding fabric, cover the foundation exterior along the south and east building elevations. The, the subject site location, as I mentioned, is in the Sacramento Street-Chamberlain Street Residential Historic District. It was not surveyed as part of the city's Historic Resource Survey back in 1984. It is also not listed on the State Register of Historic Resources or the National Register of Historic Places. The subject property, as well as the immediate surroundings, are zoned single-family residential. The request by Ms. Volker would, would replace existing deteriorated lap siding with board and batten siding. Also, a horizontal bellyboard with shake-style siding installed above the board and batten along the south elevation. The request also would add a faux rock veneer, a echo ridge southern ledger stone at the base of the home's foundation along the building's south and east elevations, which would cover or replace the existing texture 111 to improve the, the home's character and appearance. The request also would involve replacing leaky windows, the, the two picture windows with the divided light panes. One of those windows is eight feet by seven foot, and it's along the south building elevation, it has 20 divided light panes. The second picture window is seven by seven, seven feet by seven, along the east building elevation, and it has 18 divided light panes. Attachment A of the staff report contains a complete description of Ms. Volker's project in narrative form, plan elevation documents, an example of proposed board and batten siding and the rock veneer. Photos showing interior deterioration of windows and drainage caused by water intrusion were provided for you this evening. We got copies of those from the applicant today, and were made available to you prior to the meeting. The applicant reports that the existing leaky windows have caused damage to the window frames, walls, and hardwood flooring, as evidenced by the photos provided. The applicant consulted with carpenters and window company representatives, and the conclusion drawn was that duplicating the windows is not feasible due to the window size, the engineering involved with putting them up on the wall, the lack of energy efficiency and cost. The applicant's intent to make the improvements to the home to eliminate damage from water intrusion from deteriorating or failing exterior materials, and to improve the visual character of the home from the street, is encouraging to staff. Her intent appears to further and be consistent with the city's general plan goals and policies that encourage the maintenance of residential properties by property owners. City regulations require that when exterior alterations are proposed for a building within a historic district, and those alterations would be visible from the street, the Planning Commission is required to review these alterations as they relate to historic district, and require the Planning Commission approval before the applicant or property owner can undertake the alteration activities. Site Plan Review Regulations and the city's adopted historic criteria, the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation and Guidelines for Rehabilitating Historic Buildings. When I, as I, as I go through my staff report, I will refer to those criteria as the standards and guidelines, guidelines going forward. The standards and guidelines include 10 standards and numerous guidelines of quote recommended and quote not recommended treatments for a rehabilitation process or activity. An alteration subject to historic district review must conform to the historical criteria, the standards and guidelines, and under the guidelines, the first step in reviewing a rehabilitation activity is to identify the form, architectural materials, and features such as masonry, wood, metal, along with exterior features such as roofs, porches, and windows that define a building's character. These features must be retained in order to preserve the defining character of that structure. Proposed siding and window activities as submitted would alter two of the home's visual characteristic defining features. Its divided light windows along the south and east building elevations and the horizontal exterior lap siding are, in staff's mind, two character-defining features of the home. Changing from a horizontal to a vertical siding and changing the quantity and pattern of the divided lights would change the visual, visual appearance of the character-defining features found on the building. The guidelines do not recommend in cha, remake, excuse me, the guidelines do not recommend changing wood siding or windows that are important in defining a building's historic character or to achieve an improved appearance. Furthermore, the guidelines do not recommend replacing character-defining windows and wood siding features with new windows or wood features that do not convey the same visual appearance. Staff encourages the Planning Commission to continue at a minimum the window component of the request to a, a meeting set tonight of March 17th, to require the applicant to revise and submit for commission consideration, a window system that includes grids or grills to achieve the visual full-divided light appearance that more closely resembles the existing windows, to be substantially consistent with the standards and guidelines. The siding alterations, however, do not conform to the standards and guidelines. Staff recommends that this request component be denied, because it is not recommended under the standards and guidelines. Repair of or replace in kind the existing lap siding that is deteriorated is encouraged under the standards and guidelines. The proposed faux rock veneer would not involve the alteration of a character-defining feature of the building, in staff's opinion. The veneer would enhance the home and would appear compatible to homes built of the era, therefore consistent with the Site Plan Review Regulations. Staff recommends granting conditional approval of the rock veneer. In conclusion, on pages six and seven of the staff report, we've outlined some options for you to consider, should the commission agree with staff's analysis regarding the building's character-defining features. And those outlines involve, as I mentioned, perhaps continuing the entire request to a future date for the applicant to come back with revisions to the windows. Alternatively, the commission can make independent decisions on each of the three requests tonight involving the siding, the windows, and the veneer. The applicant is in the audience this evening, and that concludes my staff report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Painter. This is a complex issue. Thank you for, you know, clarifying it and bringing all the, you know, relevant issues to our attention. I have a couple of questions for you. When, I, I did not go back through our zoning manual to find when the, this historic district was created. Do you happen to know that off the top of your head?
Recollection, it was 81, 82?
81 or 82, thank you very much. And the other question I had is about this faux rock veneer. We weren't provided a sample or picture of what that would look like.
Yeah, there is, and it's on the wall. The applicant provided a, an example of what the siding and the faux rock would look like.
Okay, I thought that, I thought, I was looking at that for the, okay, thank you very, the, about the faux rock veneer, though, under our, the guidelines for rehabbing historic buildings, you know, that, that's one of the things that they don't like faux rock, they would, I guess they prefer true rock. In your evaluation of this proposal, you feel that the rock veneer is not, doesn't harm the character of the building, and therefore should, is something that we should consider approving?
Correct. The texture 111 siding clearly is not a character-defining feature either. If it was original material, staff may have a different opinion about it, but as I mentioned in the staff report, texture 111 came into existence, I believe, in the early 60s, and this home is estimated to be, to be built in the mid 30s. Our permit activity, there is a reference to a permit for remodel, but you have to understand, some of our old permits have very little description on them as to really what happened. We don't, we're not obligated to keep improvement plans for residential buildings. We are required to keep for commercial, but not residential. But his, history has found, in, in my time here, that we have many permits for many parts of town, for many addresses, which have little or no description as to really what the permit was for. In some cases, there's not even an address listed, so it's hard to, to go back and pinpoint where that permit and who it was applied for. It takes some deduction based on the owner of the property, if, if properties are known by particular person or persons, then you can kind of work backward from that to determine if that permit was for that particular site.
Thank you. Any other questions on the staff report? Okay, at this time, we'd like to ask Ms. Volker to step to the podium and give us a summary, or if you have any other comments about your application?
Yeah, good evening.
Good evening.
The rock veneer, the faux rock veneer was, it was applied as or like product, because when I started this whole process a year ago, I don't even know if that product's available. So it'd be some kind of cobblestone rocky thing. That being said, I think I came to an alternative today on the windows. I would still have to have them divided, but I can have hand-built grids put in frames and then installed on solid windows, and I'm happy with that. I bought the house for the windows. I love my windows. The rest of it is not very pretty. So, the other reason for doing the batten board is it's also economically affordable for me. And I know, it's a late 1800s kind of application, so I don't know what I can do about that, but I can, conformed with the windows. I know that the rock veneer was approved, but I think Mr. Smith is going to not be happy with that application, so, due to our current, our conversation we had before the meeting, so. My house kind of looks like a choo-choo train right now. It's got the horizontal siding, goes all the way down the street and all the way around. I'm just trying to make it pretty, affordable, stop the leaking, and move on. So if you have questions for me, I'm glad to answer.
Okay, thank you. I do have a couple of questions, and probably some other commissioners do. The, we heard a lot about the windows, and I appreciate, you know, we got even more detail on the, the leak damage, and I can well imagine, you know, that these need to be replaced, and I'm very sympathetic to giving you something that is sound. But I was wondering about, there was, there wasn't much discussion about the siding itself. Is, is it deteriorated?
Oh, it's horrible, yes. In the south side of my house, you can put your finger in the, in the siding where it doesn't get good, good sun exposure. So, it's pretty bad.
And do you have, have you had a contractor give you a percentage, you know, because you actually provided us a, a copy of those guidelines, so I'm sure you familiarized yourself with them, and the recommendation is to, you know, repair rather than replace and change. So did they give you an estimate of the percentage?
My dilemma is, on repair, as opposed to replace, the house has been painted over and over and over again. You can see by the photos in the pamphlet that you have. So I would literally have to have it sanded down, and then I'm dealing with lead-based paint. Possible. So to me, that wasn't feasible. Then I go in and I applied, have it sanded, and then I have to do a hazmat removal, and that's just opening up a whole can of worms.
So your, your solution then is, or it's your evaluation that it is deteriorated beyond repair and needs to be replaced?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions from other commissioners for Ms. Volker?
Well, I just want to say, I hate these requests. I, I really do. I hate these. From the, from the private property rights perspective and the economical perspective, my inclination would not to be to approve anything and just continue. I hate to continue it to St. Patty's Day, but it sounds like that's what we might be doing. But, I, because I'm unclear, I would like to see a sample of what you've, as close as possible, what you're going to choose for the rock product. I do think, I think it adds a nice feature, frankly, to the home, actually. I'd like to see resolution on, on the siding, and I don't, I don't know how we're going to get there with that, because I, I think staff's assessment is, is correct. But you're talking about, it's just prohibitively expensive to go with the lap siding as opposed to the board and batten. Is that, is that what I understood you to say?
It's, yeah, it's a lot more expensive.
And I'm totally sensitive, I'm totally sensitive to that, too, so.
Prohibitive to try to restore the existing lap siding, is that your question?
Yeah, so that's why she went that direction, as opposed to lap siding, if I understood correctly.
Correct.
I had a question that's a little bit separate that has to do with the memorandum that was included in the packet with regards to replacing the electrical panel that's being required. Would that requirement to replace that electrical, electrical panel Would that requirement to replace that electrical panel move your timelines or priorities in terms of your siding and things?
That is something we discovered when I came in to find out what I needed to do, what kind of application process I needed to go through. I had no idea I was even in a historic district until I talked with Andrew. Now, prior, I had to put a back deck on, but it wasn't visible from the street, so we didn't have to go through this process. So I didn't quite understand the whole impact of historic district.
So it's not -- it wasn't revealed to you when you purchased the house?
No, I bought the house as a foreclosure.
Oh, okay. Okay, so do you think that this would make it so that you want to postpone the siding, or would you still want to employ?
I would go through on both because there's going to be some electrical improvements that have to be made with --
Came into play.
-- all at the same time. I'd just rather do it all together.
Okay, yeah, great. Okay.
Anyone else have a question? Mr. Wilson?
No.
Barbara, any questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Volker.
Thank you.
We'll open it up for public comment on the application, and we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes.
Kirk Smith. To be clear, I concur in two of the three suggestions of the staff. As far as the windows, I talked to the resident, my neighbor, earlier, and I understand the complexity of trying to get thermal-pane windows that are like what they have now, but her suggestion makes sense, which is to have like four panels that would be sectioned that would be like one-by-one-foot squares of glass. It's just like what you have over in this far corner, only it's white. So that's a way to achieve the current efficiency standards, resistance of water, and would have the historic look is by being in the same kind of grids. In the old days, you didn't have a glass company. You went into the hardware store and got glass in squares, one foot or two-foot squares, because labor was cheaper than the materials. That property was -- is part of five complexes in that same area. They're all small, extraordinarily simplistic. They have no special character. That's part of their historic quality. They were built during the Depression. Paul Giulio owned and lived in one of those, and my understanding is he owned at least two of the others for rental properties. And you'll note that they're really small because they have -- they're duplexes where they have -- most of them are duplexes or have a mother-in-law suite. They're all painted white, and as far as that lower portion, they had lattice work, which was common in that period. You cannot have lattice work now by the code, but what you can do is have either cement or all-weather plywood that's painted dark, and then you put the lattice work over it. But I know of no property, no residential property in the city of Placerville that has faux stone of any kind. This is Sacramento Street located on Sacramento Hill that was known as Hangtown Hill in the 1850s. It was the main way to get into and out of town. This home on your left is the Marsh House, built in 1870. It's still there. All the houses from there down are all historic, and they've all been largely maintained the way they were. This would be a radical departure. I appreciate the idea of wanting to modernize it or fix it up, but there are homes that have that that were built in the 1950s. I lived in one. It had plaster rock at the bottom. The only one that has rock was built by an Italian masonry worker in 1939, and that's the one directly across from the Catholic Church. That's solid rock, and it covers two floors and the top, but there was no faux. And by the way, opposite of these houses, these small, simple houses, is a series of houses that have been wonderfully maintained and restored. They're all from the Arch and Craft Movement. You see wonderful corbels, wonderfully painted. The one directly across was the Flynn family. Joe Flynn was the supervisor for now it's occupied by Brian Verkamp. So there are homes that go back a long ways. From that side of the street, it goes all the way down to Chamberlain. They have not been largely touched. There are some windows that have been modified, and it happens because either people ignore the rules or they don't know about them, and I think it's largely the latter. But I understand their plight. It looks like the siding went sideways, and for the houses above them, that kind of wor -- that house is built in 1939. There are a series of what look like wood strips. They're actually one strip or one block of wood, and then it's milled to where it has that look. And I redid a house that's 100 years old on the top, and that's what we did, is we got it all in sections. So either way, either what you have now or that style, you can get them both, and they're available in all kinds of material. They even have some that's fire-resistant and some that's fireproof, actually made of cement. And it looks like the lower portion of their house on the east side has that kind of material. It's kind of muddled, so it's a combination. I hope that helps you.
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up. Thank you very much, though, Mr. Smith. I appreciate your insight, and I think we're coming to a resolution, or at least some agreement on what needs to be done. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak about the proposal? Okay. Thank you very much. I'll close the public comment portion of the hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion. This is a, you know, a difficult situation. I think there are some good alternatives out there that need to be considered, and I just would like to make sure that the applicant knows at least, you know, some of the thoughts of the commission at this time. From my perspective, you know, the windows definitely have to be replaced, and I'm glad to hear that they're, you know, you're considering some alternatives. So this, I'm kind of leaning toward continuing this, actually, the whole application to March 17th. I'd like to see what you're thinking about as far as using the divided light look for those replacement windows, because I think that is essential to the character of the house. I also am sympathetic to the condition of that siding. I, you know, I haven't, you know, been there to look at it to know just how deteriorated it is, but there are several issues. One is if it cannot be replaced. We do, it's my thought that we do need to keep the horizontal lap siding look. The board and batten, the vertical look, just really, I realize it's more economical to go that way, but I feel that it would destroy the character of that home, and it's actually, you know, from the pictures we've seen, I did drive by briefly to take a look at how it's situated and the other houses around it, but the board and batten look, I just don't think would fit. And also, as the staff report mentioned, as I drive around Placerville, it -- board and batten really is very rare for our community, for our older homes. Having said that, and also taking off on what Mr. Smith was alluding to as far as alternatives in the lap siding, the location of this house is on Sacramento Street as we're heading, you know, up that hill and over toward Diamond Springs. We, in protecting our housing stock as we modernize, and I realize we don't have the authority to impose this, but I would like you to consider a fire-resistant material. There is cement fiberboard, hardyboard. There are alternatives in lap siding that, and I've used that on my own house. I found it, you know, fairly affordable. It may be, you know, more than you thought you would have to spend, but I think, given the look, I think in modernizing it, you could at least research those and come back to the commission of, you know, with your preference on what you want to do with your And I also have to speak to the fact that, you know, you said that you didn't realize you were in a historic district. Well, that's, you know, that's rather unfortunate. I realize these foreclosure sales can sometimes take a little, proceed a little too quickly for you to do all your due diligence, but it is the fact, and as the commission, it is our responsibility to protect this look, you know, of the homes we have, and it's not a historical home on the historical register, but we're trying to, you know, continue this look of the houses surrounding it so that changes that are made to modernize it are in harmony with the rest of the district. Having said that, I'm going to turn it over to my other commissioners. I'm sure you have, all have comments, so I'll let you have a turn at the mic. Amy, do you have a?
Go ahead, John.
Okay, John, go ahead.
Well, I'm going to part with my compadres up here. I like the idea of the reverse batten board. If I was going to do it, I would not use sanded plywood. I would use the cement fiberboard that comes with a rough-sawn, so you have rough-sawn texture. Number one, it's going to hold your paint a whole lot better, and it's easier to put up, and it'll last a lot longer. As far as it being used, yeah, it is used sparsely throughout, but if you go to most of our recent additions in this town, you're going to find horizontal siding because it's the least expensive to put up. Okay? So I'm not in favor of just putting the eight-inch lap siding back up on the house and calling it good. I think you have, as far as I'm concerned, you've done something to that home to improve it, yet keeping the character of the residential neighborhood, and I commend you for that.
John, did you mean, did you mean vertical as opposed to horizontal?
Yes.
Okay. And so I'm just trying to get some concepts here. In this, I'm going to hold this up. Nobody else can see it. This, it's labeled "example of intended application." I took this to mean the rock veneer, but was it the board and batten as well, or both? Kind of, this is what you, this is what you think is going to look for both elements? Okay, fair enough. Okay. It would be, it would be particularly helpful for me in my tiny dinosaur brain to see as close to the exact samples as you're planning to use. That's number one. Number two, there's another exhibit in here. Left neighbor looks like this. Okay, now, this has a much more historic lap siding. Is that the lap siding you call that, what this is, as well as what you have presently, right? What's presently there? I think this is what my home actually has. But I notice on this particular exhibit that there's rock going all the way up this column, okay? Now, this is an attractive home. It looks clean-tight. The roof looks fairly new, and it looks modern, okay? And yet, I see, this strikes me as being an older historic home. I can tell the home is older. So one of my guiding principles with this request, which, as I said earlier, I hate these requests, because I'm sympathetic to the property owner for sure, is that if the, if I'm struck, if the overall impression to me is, well, yeah, I think that's an older home. It's been, it has been, refurbishment is probably the wrong word, but it's been maintained, okay? It's been treated and helped and maintained, but it still has that character. I think that's going to be my guiding decision ultimately. I do support a continuance only because I do want to see everything collectively at one time, and I would like to see it as close to what you're planning to do as possible. You've got to be very close to material selection, I would presume, and you've got the idea for the window component, so if we could have all those, at least from my view, collectively in one package, I think that would be really, really helpful. Why don't you come to the microphone?
Please step up to the mic if you --
Step up to the microphone, please. Yeah, because you're on the right, yes.
I just want to be clear that if I brought in product samples as opposed to photos, if I got close to the choosing, as you put --
Yes.
-- and I did actually choose and brought that product in, it would be beneficial.
That's really helpful.
Okay. All right, I understand. Thank you.
Yeah, I feel like I was in all of your brains while you were thinking through, because I had a lot of the same thoughts that I would really like to see because these are such different-looking pictures. I would love to see how it would actually deploy on your house, because I think that would really show the more realistic idea of what's going on and may look very similar or give off a similar feel. There is the horizontal all throughout the neighbors, your direct neighbors around, and I think it looks continuous there and things, but I agree that in a continuance to see the new window proposal, take a more realistic look at the materials and the final planning, and go from there would be, would be a lot better than making any corny decision tonight that might inhibit us later down.
I'm reluctant to break it apart. One, part of the staff recommendation was to move forward with approving the rock veneer. I think I would, I would be more comfortable just approving all the changes, modifications that you would like to have done on your home as one package. As far as that rock veneer, you know, the picture that you provided to us and, as well as this picture is maybe, you know, what you have kind of in mind, but we're not real sure tonight. The rock veneer, I think, would be a good addition, especially covering over the T-111, so that, again, it, I don't think it would really change the character of your house. More importantly is, to me, is the lap siding and the divided light windows, so any other comments, thoughts from commissioners? Well, I would like to make the motion that we continue this item to March 17th, 2020. Is that, just quickly, is that convenient for you, Ms. Volker? Okay. And in that, at that time, I would like us to consider all the components as one package so that you're clear on what it is the commission is looking for.
One question on the use of the stone. You're talking about covering the exposed concrete around the base, right? Not going higher up on the wall? Is that correct?
So the exposed concrete, there's just a little bit of exposed concrete, but the T-111 is the base, is the majority of the base under the horizontal siding, so it comes up pretty high.
That corner, that kind of, you can see it from Sacramento Street.
Yeah.
And that's the extent of the faux rock installation?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay. Mr. Painter, call the roll.
I'm sorry. For the record, who made the motion?
Chair.
I did make the motion.
And for the record, who seconded the motion?
Moi.
Chair Keeney.
Aye.
Member Friend. Member Lupper.
Aye.
Aye.
Vice Chair List.
Aye.
Member Rains.
Aye.
Very good. Okay, we'll see you on March 17th. Thank you for your patience and working with us. We understand you want to improve your home and make it more habitable, especially those windows. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll give you a moment to sort through all my papers here. Oh, here's my agenda. Great. Moving on to new business, 8.1 zoning interpretation, 20-01, city zoning ordinance 10-4-7, special temporary use permits for temporary parking lot uses. Mr. Revas, this is your item.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Staff is making this request, and this is to add temporary parking lot uses to the list of those uses that are permitted under City Code Section 10-4-7A, which are special temporary use permits, and to include said temporary parking lots in the Business Professional Zone District. City Code contains Section 10-4-7, which provides for the purpose, intent, and a set of uses subject to, and the processing procedure for special temporary use permits. We've provided the entire section in your staff report for you to peruse. Subsection A contains a list of uses permitted subject to the special temporary use permit, and subsection A5 gives the Planning Commission the authority to determine that other uses may be added to the list of uses by resolution. The review and approval by city council is not required unless a timely appeal is made to this decision within 10 working days of the commission's action. To give a little history, back on August 17th of 2010, the Planning Commission adopted Resolution Number 2010-01. the Planning Commission adopted Resolution Number 2010-01, which added temporary parking lots as a use permitted within the commercial zone, the highway commercial zone, the heavy commercial zone. This request would then further add the Business Professional Zone District to that list, allowing for temporary parking lots. A temporary parking lot use is not permitted outright in any zone district of the city. Permanent parking lot facilities and parking lots are conditional uses within the central business district, the commercial district, and the heavy commercial zone districts. Parking lots are also permitted in the highway commercial and currently also in the Business Professional Zone as an accessory use, but not a standalone use. Meaning if you have a store, an office building, or some other use where parking is required for employees or for customers, you have a parking lot to serve that particular use. New parking lot structures and lots are included within the land use categories that require site plan review per the City Code. And within the site plan review criteria, required addressing parking areas such as surfacing, landscaping, shade trees, and maintenance of the parking lots. This request originally resulted from Marshall Hospital, which has submitted three applications to allow for temporary parking lots within the Business Professional Zone. And just for background, the entire Marshall Hospital complex is within the Business Professional Zone. Staff is requesting to add the temporary parking lots within the Business Professional Zone to the list of uses that would then be subject to special temporary use permits. The stated purpose and intent of the City Code is provided in the first paragraph of this section. And it states, "Uses permitted subject to a special temporary use permit are those temporary uses which are required for the proper functioning of the community or are temporarily required in the process of establishing a permitted use or constructing a public facility. Such uses shall also be conducted such that they would not be detrimental in any way to the surrounding properties or to the community. Therefore, to approve the request, the commission must find that temporary parking lot uses in the Business Professional Zone are, one, required for the proper functioning of the community or are temporarily required in the process of establishing a permitted use or constructing a public facility. Under the existing code as described above, parking lots are considered permanent uses. Their design and appearance do reflect thoughtful review by city staff, outside agencies, and the decision-making authorities for their conformance with established standards, regulations, and criteria. The appearance of a temporary parking lot would not necessarily reflect these established design criterias due to its short-lived existence. So in addition, the City Code would not restrict a property owner from applying each year for any listed temporary use permit uses, including temporary parking lots if listed. So this raises an issue of the potential for what we would call a serial special temporary use permit. And City Code Section 10-4-7B3 states, "Special temporary use permit shall specify the period of time set by the Development Services Director not to exceed one year from the date of issuance of the permit. Therefore, should staff determine that a serial establishment of a temporary parking lot constitutes the establishment of a permanent use, staff can deny the application that would then be subject to appeal and consideration by the Planning Commission. It's staff's opinion that the hospital can be considered a public facility benefiting the entire community and thus should be afforded the ability to make such an application for temporary parking lots in the Business Professional Zone. The hospital has undergone significant expansion, requiring additional parking space to serve both employees and the general public. Staff finds that the inclusion of temporary parking lots to the list of uses subject to a special temporary use permit under the City Code is categorically exempt from the environmental review pursuant to Section 15311B of the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, in that it specifically states small parking lots are listed as exempt from such review. So it's staff's recommendation is as follows. Should the commission find that the request meets the legislative purpose and intent of the City Code, a draft resolution is provided as Attachment A to the staff report for the commission to adopt as is or amend as it deems necessary. Should the commission find that the request does not meet the purpose and intent of the City Code, then the commission should make a finding that the requested use of a temporary parking lot in the Business Professional Zone is not required for the proper functioning of the community or that the requested use is not temporarily required in the process of establishing a permitted use or constructing a public facility. For this action, amended order is sufficient, and the adoption of the resolution would not be required. Staff, at this point, before moving forward with the recommended actions, just make a correction that was brought to our attention in the staff report. And that would be on page two where, under Section B and subsection one. And that was a B verbatim out of our code. So if you go down to the third line where it starts reading, "Such application shall be filed with," we wrote "development, development department." It should read "Development Services Director." So we will correct that for the record. And so you know that we'll make that change. So with that, staff is recommending that the commission take the following actions. One, enter staff's report into the public record. Two, consider this request under the authority granted to the Planning Commission pursuant to City Code Section 10-4-7A and any public received this evening. And then, three, adopt Resolution 2020-01, adding temporary parking lots within the Business Professional Zone District to the list of uses subject to a special temporary use permit under City Code Section 10-4-7A, and making the required findings that are listed in the resolution. And that concludes staff's report. Thank you. I'll answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you, Pierre. Any questions? Joan?
Go ahead. I went left.
I called on John first.
I am...
I called on John first. I saw him move, and then I heard the click. So I'm thinking...
Thank you. In the draft resolutions, the last whereas, at the end of that, it says, "In that small parking lots, small parking lots are listed as exempt from such review." Why distinguish a small parking lot? And what constitutes a small parking lot? And do we need to have a size put into this ordinance?
In staff's opinion, you probably do not. I think when we're talking about larger parking lots, we're probably talking about parking lots that would allow for the parking of, you know, several hundred cars or parking garages. Those kinds of structures would not be exempt under CEQA. Small parking lots are typically, you're looking at, you know, usually 50, you know, cars or less. You're probably looking at maybe an acre or less in size of area that would be taken up with a temporary parking lot. And they're also ephemeral. So typically, when somebody comes in to establish a temporary parking lot, the requirement would probably be either a grading and/or improvement plans so that city staff would look and ensure that proper drainage is maintained while the parking lot is established and then being utilized. But it wouldn't require any trees or lighting or those kinds of things.
I just found it interesting. It all through this talks about parking lots. We get down to the whereas, and it says "small parking lot." So that was my question on that.
Yeah, no, thank you. That's a very, very good question. And we took that language directly out of the CEQA guidelines. And the CEQA guidelines didn't give any further definition of what is meant by "small." But I think staff has a good idea what it means by "small." Thank you.
Now, Mr. Friend, I believe you had a question.
I don't know whether to use my bass pole or my shotgun for pheasant, but I'm chest-high in weeds. This was the most confounding thing. So let me get this... By the way, I think I can answer the "small." What constitutes it? Does it meet the requirement required for the proper functioning of the community? If it's not required, if its absence would have no impact on the community, I would think that's "small" by definition, right? That's the test I think I would apply. I wasn't sure if we are, if this was an addition of a zone, business professional, to where parking lots are permitted or if this was adding a function such as Christmas tree sales and carnivals.
That was my same question. Just so if I can...
Okay. So I'm of the impression, being kind of glib on this, but I'm under the impression what we're really doing with this is simply adding... Well, we're doing two things because we have both... We could have just said, "In addition to temporary outside displays, Christmas tree sales, carnivals, and et cetera, we're gonna add parking lots of a certain size or something." Okay? But we didn't do that. We talked about parking lots, but then we also talked about the Business and Professions Code. So I am still a little bit confused about why we're doing it this way, number one. Number two, I'm struck by what is, I consider, kind of an arcane approach that special temporary use permits... The next item that comes along, when we had the parking, the place where you sit...
The parklet.
The parklet, thank you. Was that, that was a special temporary use permit? I can't recall, but it must have been something similar to that, right?
Well, the, yeah, if I may, Madam Chair...
And we didn't do that by resolution.
The, no, that's because that was an independent codified set of ordinances that regulate the establishment and operation of a sidewalk dining. So that was an entire ordinance that was applied to the code that's now created, and it's separate than this.
The parklet was under, no, the parklet. The parklet, where they took a couple of...
Oh, the parklet.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. I was thinking sidewalk dining.
Really?
Yeah, the parklet was a different creature altogether because the city has no code or ordinance that basically addresses parklets. So not to get confused, I wouldn't even include parklet in this discussion.
Okay. But did that require a special temporary use permit?
Well, we used that as the vehicle in order to give a proper, public discussion of that item because it was brand-new.
Okay.
And so that's why we did that. But essentially, the parklet is an encroachment.
All right. Marshall Hospital, since that was brought up in the report. So how did we, because I just can't remember, how did we deal with Marshall Hospital's requests for their parking? Was it three separate parkings, three applications? Or did they do it three times? I can't recall.
Marshall Hospital has currently submitted applications for three separate temporary parking lots.
That we haven't seen yet.
You have not seen, and you won't see those.
Okay. Because they'll be dealt with administratively, assuming we adopt this.
Because they're done administratively, yes.
Okay.
And then staff would make the appropriate findings because you're just adding this to the list. So we would determine whether or not, first of all, they're small parking lots. They were a large parking lot. We wouldn't grant it. And of course, they could appeal to you. If we felt, let's just give an example. If someone were to just buy a vacant piece of business professional and want to install a parking lot on it for just general parking, we would deny that.
Okay.
Because it's not permitted in the Business Professional Zone. Standalone parking lots are not permitted. So in the case of Marshall, you have a very large, what we would consider a public facility, even though it's a private hospital, it's not a public hospital.
But it's for the community.
It has, right, it benefits the whole community, these parking lots. And I don't want to get too much into the weeds regarding Marshall Hospital because we will be evaluating those applications, and we have yet to get there. This is just setting the ability of staff to be able to take in that application. And hindsight's 2020, and I must apologize because I thought about it, but it was after I had everything already completed. I probably, just for reference, should have included that earlier resolution that the commission approved back in 2010 when you added parking lot, temporary parking lots to begin with in all those other commercial zones.
Okay.
Because then you would have, probably would have been clear on what you're doing here. We just wanted to go ahead and give you the entire code. But actually, you're not changing the ordinance. You're just passing a resolution, giving staff then the authority to consider, yet, an additional temporary use, temporary parking lots in the Business Professional Zone. Because the commission had already done that in 2010, adding it to the commercial zone, the highway commercial zone, the heavy commercial zone.
Okay. So the temporary parking lots, we have approved that for certain zones. Now, we want to expand the zones that can, that that applies to, which in this case is Business and Professions.
That's correct.
And one of the reasons that we want to do that is so that those will be subject to review for standards and appearance and all those things. Because otherwise, they could, somebody could do it, and we would have no say in it. Is that, am I getting to the kind of where we're going with this?
Yes, and that's correct. And I believe, I believe Commissioner Friend, you and I both served on this commission many, many years ago. And staff was bringing to us at that time temporary use permits for Marshall Hospital for parking lots that are now permanent.
Correct, correct. Okay. I think I kind of understand now. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I've got a spatial problem. Small parking lot, are you talking about the size of the one by C and H? Or that size? Are you talking about the parking lot like across some four reds? How, I mean, how many cars does this small parking lot take?
No, I think it's, as I, I think I'd stated earlier, we're probably looking at maybe up to an acre in size at the most. We're not looking at parking garages. We're looking at just surface parking where it's temporary. So you're not going to get pavement. You're going to get gravel. You're going to get all those kinds of things. And we would condition it to make sure that drainage and everything is taken care of. It doesn't become a nuisance, doesn't create dust. But you're probably looking at maybe 50 or so cars maximum. So there's a lot of staff discretion in there. We would look at the size and scope of what's being proposed. If we felt it was too large, we could deny it. And then the applicant would have the ability then to appeal to the Planning Commission. Typically speaking, it could become a CEQA issue if it was too large of a parking lot. So say, some of the larger parking lots in the city of Placerville are ones associated with some of our shopping centers or large grocery stores and that kind of thing. We wouldn't be approving anywhere near that.
I had a question about the renewal of it. So it said that you guys have the ability to sort of rein in serial renewals on a temporary use. But what if the project is like a five-year project? Is that still considered a temporary use parking lot? Is the ultimate, I guess, is the ultimate, the ultimate plan for the parking lot the most important part? Like, yes, it will be long, but when it's done, we're not keeping it? Or is there a timeline, I guess, associated with a temporary use?
Yeah, very good question. And I'll just give, I'll go ahead and take this opportunity to give the Planning Commission then a little more history with regards to Marshall. Staff had met with Marshall Hospital staff probably, I'm thinking, five or six years ago. And there was a parking issue, and they had a number of temporary parking lots, leased parking lots, and they were, you know, vanning people in. And then, of course, that was subsequent to a lot of their significant expansion. And so they're currently underparked. And so they were proposing to build a parking structure. And they requested five years to be able to, you know, assemble the appropriate, you know, funding to be able to do that. Well, price kept escalating, and now the estimates are $65 million and thereabouts, maybe even higher, to build the parking structure to serve their needs rather than constructing these temporary parking... They're already installed. We wanted to get them just permitted. But they want to build a surface lot. So the surface lot, of course, would be, they're going to have to come in with conditional use permit, site plan review, as was done on some of their other surface parking lots so it meets all of our standards that I mentioned. So we, staff would like to get a plan from them that specifies, you know, a time certain when they would have the funding and when we would expect to see then an application for the permanent surface... application for the permanent surface parking lot. So staff would then have the discretion to renew or just take in an application to renew the temporary parking lot, as long as we felt we weren't just creating a serial permanent temporary parking lot.
Okay.
So I hope that's helpful to you and, and you understand how we would be, you know, viewing that that process.
Yeah, and I absolutely see the necessity, and I have faith in the, in the departments of the city that they will be properly oversight. And that, yeah, I think that was my only questions I had, except that you've clarified what we're actually implementing. Was there any reason that the business zone was excluded back in 2010, or it just wasn't included?
It probably wasn't included, probably wasn't analyzed. It's more of a zone of more quiet professional type of uses.
I figured as much.
Yeah, where you get the more of the heavy, heavy industrial and those kinds of uses, where you are permitted to have a standalone parking lot.
Yeah, I just want to make sure there wasn't like, we are not doing this for this specific reason at the time.
Right.
But it sounds like it's just been excluded, so.
It makes sense from staff's perspective.
Mm-hmm.
Madam Chair, I hate to, I hate to deliberate on this anymore, but I, I'm confused again. So the resolution that we have is interpreting that a temporary parking lot is a use permitted subject to a special temporary use permit. So there's a request for that. So going back to the small parking lot, that, that last whereas is that this request for a temporary parking lot is exempt from SEQA review, right? Because SEQA exempts them, I guess, right? That's how that's read? And, and are all of the, I'm really confused as to the, the size of the parking lots that we're talking about. At first, when this came up, I'm sorry for my confusion, because I really, no, I'm totally befuddled. I thought that somebody wants a temporary parking lot, and we wouldn't have to do a special temporary use permit if it was tiny, small. But if it's larger, they do have to do a special temporary use permit. Is that still what we're talking about?
No, that's.
See, I, that's.
Yeah, that wouldn't be correct. Essentially, let me just talk in generalities. Parking lots are, are permitted as an accessory used to a legal use. So if you're talking about a commercial zone in general, you have a store, a retail, a restaurant, you have a parking lot. Well, that parking lot's allowed, whatever discretion was applied to that use that was permitted that's requiring the parking. Standalone parking lots, where you just have a parking lot, those typically are only allowed in certain zones, such as the heavy commercial, it would allow a standalone parking lot, but under permit. So in this case, there are sometimes circumstances where the city wants to grant somebody the establishment of a temporary parking lot. So that's where Marshall Hospital is a very, very good example, because they're trying to gather the funding to actually do surface, a permanent surface parking lot adjacent to the hospital complex in the business professional zone to serve their, you know, the needs of their employees and their, and the, and the public. So, and that would be paved.
Paved.
And so that would, that would come before you at some future date, such as the other one, say, on Washington Street did. It's landscaped, it's paved, landscaped, and the whole, it meets all the criteria. So, but in, but in the interim, they have a, they have a parking issue, and so they've established three temporary parking lots, and it's, it's incumbent upon the city to get those legal.
Not paved.
They're not paved.
They're gravel, okay.
Right, they're temporary. So they will go away at some future date when the hospital, and we want to get that plan before we approve these temporary use permits. So, but even before staff can doing that, we, staff needs that vehicle to approve a temporary use permit in the business professional zone, because right now, temporary parking lots aren't permitted in the business professional zone, absent having the commission approve this resolution. That would then add it to the list of temporary uses permitted in the business professional zone, being a temporary parking lot.
Unless it was small?
No.
That's not small?
These are small.
These by definition are small.
A large, we would not, we would not permit a large temporary parking lot under a temporary use permit.
Got you. And it would have to be subject to SEQA or whatever.
Correct.
Okay. We consider all these small, just by.
Just small.
Now I have clarity, and thank you.
Yes, and I think it was Commissioner Raines had asked about that, and I, my only comment was, under SEQA and the guidelines, that that's the way it's written in the SEQA guidelines, small parking lots is specifically listed as exempt, but it doesn't define what small is. So I think it's staff's discretion to determine what small is.
Exactly.
And so I'm thinking an acre or less, 50 parking stalls.
The guidelines are necessarily vague for all the communities across the state, so that you can then use your local guidelines and judgment as to what, what fits, as opposed to SEQA, and SEQA does this in a lot of things. They, they kind of leave it open-ended.
Right, but a large parking lot, like say, one that you see serving railies, we would not approve a parking lot of that size under, under.
But in another community, I mean, just looking at size, you know, if it's a bigger sprawling community, if that is small for that jurisdiction, SEQA leaves it up to the jurisdiction to define what small is. And so we've already kind of covered that ground by having the ordinance before us for special temporary use permits, we're just simply amending that to include business professional. We're still leaving it to our local guidelines, staff discretion.
Yes, but I would say that, that the size of the parking lot isn't, isn't to be considered relative to other parking lots that are also maybe much larger. And so if you're in a community that has a sea of parking lots, and there, somebody's proposing a temporary parking lot that's five acres in size, I don't think you could get a SEQA exemption for that.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thanks for walking us through that, I think only.
Happy to do so.
John, have you?
Yeah, sorry, it was complicated.
Gone through this issue before? Michael and Pierre have, but.
That was just before.
Just before you got, so, you know, it's, it's news, news to the rest of us. All right. No further questions? Well, I'll undertake a motion to take action on this item.
I would just note that there's no members of the public to speak to this item, I think, unless somebody's hidden behind the podium.
Thank you for stating that for the record, yes.
Yes.
It's, it's, it's just us now, so.
I make a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay. And, let's see, do we need to say anything else about that?
Take the actions as listed on page five.
Take the actions listed on page five.
One, two, and three.
One through three. Okay, we have a motion to take the staff's recommendation. Second?
Second.
Okay. Do we need a voice vote on this, or?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Painter, call the roll.
Member Raines. Vice Chair List.
Yes.
Chair Keeney.
Yes.
Member Lepa.
Yes.
Member Friend.
Yes, get my bass pole.
Four oh. All right, well, that was, that was more difficult than we thought it was going to be. Thanks, everybody. Let's move on to number nine, matters from commissioners and staff. Do any of the commissioners have something they want to share with staff at this time? No staff, anything you want to bring to our attention?
I just want, although, Andrew, before you go, if you're going to bring us any items that are going to twist our brains, the last two items, back-to-back, were challenging, let us know in advance.
Do you have a cup of coffee before you come down here? Okay. Any matters, oh, I'm sorry, John, did you?
No, no.
So any matters from the staff for the commission?
Well, the, we, we have, we will have no meeting on March the 3rd. March 17th will consist of the continuation of tonight's item for 3148 Sacramento Street. Staff also anticipates having on that agenda, because the bylaws require officers' elections after the March 1st date. My understanding is I have received notification by a member or two who will not be present. Staff will still put that on the March 17th agenda with the, with the idea it's going to be continued to such time where all five of you must be present in which to, to make, go through the officer elections and or changing bylaws. The other reminder would be Chair Keeney, please come by the desk here to sign the resolution tonight that was passed tonight. And also, the other item on the agenda on the 17th, staff will bring forward a housing element status report, which is required under state statute. We also will provide it to city council. The city council's meeting and action is what precipitates us sending it to the state, which is required under government code. That's all I've got. Director Rebus, do you have any announcements?
Let's see, at the next, next Tuesday at the council meeting, they will be considering the appeal of a site plan review where the commission approved of the demolition of the house at 3095 Cedar Ravine. So that's still planned, and I think there was something else. Oh, I'll let you know that on Friday, the Development Services Department issued the building permit for sourdough. So they will be constructing, as the lawsuit continues through the court system or whatever happening there. But they're moving forward on, on their permit. And I think that's it. Andrew, anything else? That, that's it for staff, thank you.
Chris?
Yes.
I have a question. The officers, don't they serve for a year?
Yes.
Have they already been, has Chris been chair for a year?
We should ask her, but I believe she would tell you yes.
I was hoping you'd keep track of that.
Oh, Lordy, where did, where did the, where did the time go? Okay, thank you.
It is a whirlwind.
Thank you. It's just like I've only been on for six months. What do you mean a year?
Time flies when you're having fun.
So Andrew, we are, we do not have a meeting scheduled for the 3rd of March?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, anything else? Well, then we stand adjourned until the March 17th meeting. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thank you.